Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting of the 12th of September 2024, here in the Council Administration Building. The time is nine o'clock. Calling attendance, good morning to you all. I see that you're all in attendance. And I'll move straight to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We'll now move on to the opening prayer. We're very fortunate this morning to have Reverend David Fender from the Ipswich Uniting Church. Reverend Fender, would you mind coming to the lectern? Morning.
Good morning.
Please tell us your name, where you're from, and feel free to talk a bit about your church and then lead us into prayer.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is David Fender from Ipswich Uniting Church. We like to say that we are a very young church, been formed only a couple of years ago, but drawing on an incredibly long legacy, including Allenborough Street Church, that's one of the oldest churches in Queensland, from before separation from New South Wales. Can you join me as we pray, please? God, we thank you for this community that we are part of, of Ipswich City. We thank you for each person who is part of it. We pray for them, that they may find fulfillment, they may find encouragement, they may find a place of wholeness and wellbeing in this city. Pray for those who are marginalised, for those who suffer housing stress and financial stress at the moment particularly. And we pray for this council, for these men and women who have been gathered here. Pray for your wisdom, for your discernment, for your courage, for your boldness, for them to be able to lead our city. Thank you for them and pray your blessing upon their deliberations today and each and every day. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Reverend Fender? Apologies and leave of absence? I have none, unless there's any. Condolences? I believe we have one from Council Tully.
Thank you, ma'am. I move that council convey condolences on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ipswich to the family of the late Colleen Margaret Freeman, who passed away on the 16th of August 2024.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Colleen Margaret Freeman, Nee Burke, lived at Villa Maria Eastern Heights in Ipswich. She formerly lived at East Ipswich. She was born on the 12th of November 1933 and passed away on the 16th of August 2024 at the age of 90. Colleen lived in North Queensland for many years before coming to Ipswich. She joined the Australian Labor Party on the 1st of January 1961 and became the first woman in Queensland to be elected to the ALP Administrative Committee. She was president of Labor Women in Queensland from 1973 to 1979. The now disbanded Queensland Police Special Branch kept tabs on her during the regime of the former premier, Jo Belka Peterson, when she came under surveillance for supporting a multiplicity of causes, including the right of people to march in Queensland, family planning issues and women's shelters. She said they were issues which we were agitating for in the 1970s and they were issues the Belka Peterson government was not interested in. She became the mayoress of Ipswich when her husband Des Freeman was elected the 46th Mayor of Ipswich in 1979, until his retirement in March 1991, after 12 years in the role. Colleen Freeman provided unswerving support to Mayor Freeman and was active in numerous community organisations and affairs across the entire city of Ipswich, including the Mayoress's Committee, which provided key fundraising initiatives for many people in need in our community. In May 2016, 11 true ALP believers, each with at least 50 years' party membership, met at the Ipswich Trades Hall. Colleen Freeman was the only female in the group. At the time, she said, and I quote, "My father was a very strong unionist and ALP member, and I was encouraged by him to always be prepared to stand up and speak out when I saw an injustice, particularly on behalf of somebody less fortunate than myself." Colleen's beloved husband, Des, passed away in December 2020. They had been married for 65 years. Colleen was much loved and highly respected. Ipswich is poorer for her passing. She will be sadly missed. Colleen is survived by her close family as the mother and mother-in-law of Phil and Theresa, Paula and Rachel and Peter. She was a grandmother of nine and great-grandmother of one. Valet Colleen Freeman, may you rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Council Tully. Did you wish to speak, Councillor Tully?
Yeah, I'd just like to remark on one. Memories of Colleen personally are one of the nicest people you could ever meet and totally committed to community. I think her and Des collectively were a most formidable pairing in their leadership of this community. And Colleen really set the standard in many respects for, as the mayoress, that many had to follow. And just as Counselor Tully has remarked, this community is the poorer for her passing and the passing of Des Freeman as well.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. I think Councillor Madden?
Thanks, Chair. I was fortunate to meet Mrs Freeman a few times. Her son Philip was in the class below me at St Edmund's, so she was what we call a St Emma's mother. I did meet her at some ALP functions and I was presented with a person that was a champion of Ipswich and a champion of social justice, valet Colleen Margaret Freeman.
Thank you, Councillor. I only met Colleen Freeman once, and that was sadly at the funeral of Des Freeman a couple of years ago. And she has a formidable reputation. And I think also saw that the member for Blair recently also gave a condolence motion in Australian Parliament for her as well, which is, I think, very fitting for a former mayoress of Ipswich. Thank you. Councillor Tully, would you like to say anything else?
I'll just take the councillors and yourself for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. We don't normally vote for a condolence motion. We'll move on to tributes. Item six, there are none. Item seven, presentation of petitions, there are none. Eight, presentation of deputations, there are none. Nine, public participation, none. Ten, matters of public interest, none. Eleven, declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. I haven't been provided with any... Are there any declarations of interest on matters on the agenda today? Thank you very much. If there is, just let me know as we go through. Confirmation of minutes. So I'll move on to item 12.1, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting. And the recommendation is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 22nd of August 2024 be confirmed. I will move those. A second for those. Thank you, Councillor Augustine. Any errors, corrections, amendments? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item 12.2 is the confirmation of the special meeting. So the recommendation is that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 5th of September 2024 be confirmed. I will move those. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Augustine. Any corrections, amendments? You have a correction or amendment? Yes, Councillor Tully?
Thank you, Mayor. I've just forwarded this to the committee clerk, and I'll read it if that goes up in a moment. It's a proposed amendment.
Was there an error in the minutes or correction?
Probably both.
Right, okay.
No, it's not a matter of, you know, reviewing the, you know, what the decision was. It was just to make sure, yeah, to, yeah.
Yes. It would be handy if that is sort of sent to us beforehand. What is the correction?
Okay, I'll move this amendment that under item 6.1, suspension of meeting procedures, and that's on page 58 of the agenda today, delete all words after the motion moved by Mayor Theresa Harding and seconded by Councillor Pi Augustine, up to including the words that the motion was put and lost, and add the following words. And this is in italics, if councillors wish to follow it. "Councillor Paul Tully proposed an amendment that councillors be permitted to speak twice. Mayor Theresa Harding stated she noted the proposed amendment but would say no. The mayor did not call for a second to Councillor Paul Tully's proposed amendment. The mayor's motion was put to the vote by the mayor." It reads affirmative, "Councillors Harding, Augustine. The mayor did not call for a vote by those against or those abstaining from the motion. The motion was declared lost by the mayor."
Thank you. I'll probably have to re-watch the meeting, my apologies. So it would have been handy if that was forwarded to us beforehand, so we could have re-watched it. Thank you, Councillor Tully.
I'll just respond to that, that the key items to watch and to be able us to consider this today. And I think we're obliged to adopt the minutes from a previous meeting at today's meeting, to look at the time on the video at 49 minutes 30 seconds, 50 minutes 28 seconds and 50 minutes 32 seconds.
So could you repeat those three again, that 49?
49 minutes 30 seconds.
30 seconds, yeah.
50 minutes 28 seconds and 50 minutes 32 seconds. So it's all in a very short period of time. Just to make clear that the gist of what actually occurred is encompassed in the minutes of the meeting.
I would like it to be recorded accurately. I just, obviously, I've only just seen this now, so I'd have to re-watch it. So it would be great if you sent this to all of us beforehand.
Yeah, you've said that three times.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I'll move that this matter be adjourned until the last item on the agenda today.
Okay, thank you very much. I would, as the mover, I'll just double-check who was the second. I think it was Councillor Augustine. Councillor, are you okay for this to move to the last item on the agenda? Hopefully in our morning tea break, we can have a review of that meeting. Thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, two would moving that?
Yes.
It's unanimous in the room. Thank you.
Mayor, did you require a second for that?
No, I was the mover and Councillor Augustine was the second.
But with the amendment, do you require a second?
So just to be clear, yeah.
So just to be clear, I guess Councillor Tully suggested the amendment to...
I'm happy for the second to be called at the last stage of this meeting. The amendment I've proposed, I don't have had a second.
Okay.
But I'm happy for that to be, now that we've moved on with the motion to defer it, I'm happy for that to be regularised at the end of the meeting.
So with the meeting procedures, I moved and seconded. Councillor Tully had an amendment. The first, the mover and the second were comfortable with that, to move that to the end of the session. So we don't, because of that, we don't need to go to a vote or need another second. Thank you. Item 13 is a merril minute and there are none. But I'd like to give notice that I'll be moving a merril minute at the October Council Ordinary Meeting. And I have a merril, that merril minute will be, A, that council honour Ipswich State High School with the keys to the city to acknowledge and celebrate the school's achievements of winning the NRL National Schoolgirls title yesterday. B, that council's events team consult with the mayor and councillors to plan and deliver a suitable community function in which to represent the keys to the city, to Ipswich State High School once again. So just give you notice that I'll be bringing that forward to the next ordinary council meeting. We move on to item 14, which is...
Was it, just to confirm, item B again, was that council consult with the events team and councillors, was it?
That council's events team consult with the mayor and councillors to plan and deliver a suitable community function at which to present the keys to the city to Ipswich State High School. I can send that to you.
Yes, I was just, I was just giving an opportunity for the clerk to correct, that's all.
I'll send it off to her afterwards. Thank you. So it's just a notice. Item 14, business outstanding, including conduct matters and matters along the table, there are none. We now move on to item 15, which is the reception consideration of committee reports. And item, the first one is 15.1, the report of infrastructure planning and assets committee. I'll hand over to the chair to see how he would like this report managed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number 202404 of the 3rd of September 2024 for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Madden. Any discussion or would you like to speak to the report?
Yeah, just briefly, Mayor, if I may. In the officers' reports, you'll see item two, response to petition to build a playground in Wood End. I'd like to commend the petitioners for their commitment to that petition. And I also thank the councillors for considering that petition as we go forward. And I look forward to, with my co-councillor, Councillor Doyle, to working with that community with respect to the delivery of that project, a playground in the Wood End area at Wood End Park. And if I also may talk to, just excuse me one moment. No, that is it. My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As the second, Councillor Madden, do you wish to speak to the report? No? I'll open it up for anyone else? No, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried.
My apologies, Mayor, I would just like to say something.
I'm sorry, we've already moved on. Item 15.2 is the report of Finance and Governance Committee of the 3rd of September. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he'd like that report.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the Finance and Governance Committee report of 202404 be received and the recommendations contained therein be adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Johnic. Oh, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Tully, you should speak to it.
Yes, please. Item two is a procurement contract for the security services contractor award. At our committee meeting a week ago or 10 days ago, we had the opportunity to look in some detail at this award. The minutes record that it's a purchase price of $5.52 million over the entire term, being an initial period of two years with options for extension. This has become an important issue in our city. And, you know, for the provision of security services and monitoring operations, the safety and security of people across our city has become paramount since, I think it was about 1994, when security cameras were first installed in the city. And in fact, Goodenham became the first place in the world where remote security cameras were monitored at a central city location, which would seem very simple technology nowadays, but was groundbreaking technology at that time. Item three is the procurement item for the new Silver Jubilee Sports Facility clubhouse at Spring Mountain. This is really good news and I thank the federal government for the substantial contribution towards this facility, which will be welcomed by sports users and families in the eastern suburbs. This is a $3 million project. This is the awarding of a tender for the development of this particular facility. The Silver Jubilee Sports Facility opened in April 2023 with two rugby fields, an AFL field, six dedicated basketball and netball hardcourts, as well as shaded picnic and barbecue areas and a children's adventure playground. Councillor Johnic and I are particularly thrilled for this development and the funding for it, of course, which is provided by the federal government, substantially provided by the federal government. Item four is the surrender of Two Tallagalla, Two Tree Hill Road at Tallagala. It's a property which the Ipswich City Council is currently the trustee of, from the state government. And the final recommendation, which was proposed by Councillor Madden, was to undertake community consultation in line with the community engagement policy. And I think they were your words, those last three words, Mayor, to ensure that the community consultation, which should precede any final decision that we make in relation to the ongoing trusteeship, either by council or a third party at that location. Finally, item five, a recommendation, is that Councillor Marty Doyle be appointed as a member of the Finance and Governance Committee. And depending upon how much debate on this entire report takes place, I'll congratulate you in three or four minutes in becoming the newest member of the committee, Councillor Doyle. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Deputy Mayor, as the second, would you wish to speak to the report?
Just relaying what Councillor Tully said in relation to the procurement for the construction of the clubhouse for Silver Jubilee. I said a lot in the committee, so I'll keep it brief. But I just wanted to thank the federal government and our organisation for just coming through with such a great outcome. It's been years and when there's a will and there's a great argument and we can find a way, we will. So it just gives me faith again in my role. So thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, the discussion, I think, is, Councillor Madden?
I just want to say a few words about item four, the Tallagala School, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Ipswich Tribune for shining a light on this issue and providing a brief history of the school. The Tallagala School was opened on 10th of June 1879 as a state school for the area then known as the Rosewood Scrub. From the late 1880s, head teacher John William Watkins instigated a tree planting programme at the school, which saw many of the trees which exist on the site today, including jacarandas and figs in the figs lining the driveway. From 1832, a new timber residence was constructed, replacing the earlier residence. The tender of EJ Wilton of East Ipswich was accepted for construction of the building for the princely sum of £540, for construction to be completed within eight weeks from the acceptance date, which was the 1st of December 1932. By 1997, very little remained of the Tallagala township, with only the school and a historical cemetery. For 115 years, the school has served as an educational institution and central hub for local gatherings. And it's interesting today that we had mention of the passing of Colleen Freeman because Des Freeman was raised on a farm in the Tallagala area and it's likely he attended Tallagala School. Thanks, Mayor.
So thank you very much, Councillor Madden. In speaking to the matter, item three, it doesn't seem that long ago since we officially opened the Silver Jubilee Park and cut the ribbon there. And it's a park not just for residents of Spring Mountain, but all of Springfield and all of Ipswich. It's a really terrific field and the, from basketball to footy, all the different codes of footy have embraced it. So thank you to Division Two councillors for really being very persistent in securing funding there. And thank you to, I think the federal government funded about two thirds of that, which is great to see. So it's wonderful to see. And item four on the Tallagala, the building there, the old school building there. I just recently forwarded to you, Councillor Madden, some of the correspondence I've had from residents the last couple of years about it. So I'll forward those on to Council Property Services as well as part of that consultation. Thank you. Councillor Tully is the mover. Do you have anything to say in reply?
Yeah, just to thank the three councillors for your comments about Silver Jubilee. Yeah, just to thank the three councillors for your, your comments and about Silver Jubilee Park, which is, I guess we say, you know, when a new development arises, it's the jewel in the crown. We've had that at Richardson Park, Goodne, and the AFL stadium at Springfield Central. And now this is the, will be the jewel in the crown for some time until it's eclipsed by something else. To councillor Madden, I think the outcome of this is good. And that was with your wise suggestion at the meeting to that we undertake that community consultation. I am aware that probably not significantly high population nowadays, but it's a very close knit community, as you explained. And I trust that that community consultation will come up with a final decision by council, which is appropriate for the ongoing tenure of that building.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We come to item fifteen point three, which is the report of the community sport committee. And I'll hand over to that chair to see how he'd like that report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move it as per the meeting agenda today.
Thank you. Councillor Madden, as discussed earlier, would you mind if we break this up into, this is a recommendation to adopt the recommendations? You know that items three and four I didn't vote for. Do you mind if we break this up? So it's, we move items one and two, and then items three and four? That way I can vote in support of one and two, but against three and four.
I'm a little disappointed that you only raised this with me this morning at about ten past eight. I'm not sure what that means substantively differently. Your dissent is already recorded from the committee meeting. So I don't really know that that means anything. So if you could explain a bit more-
I'd like to move for, I guess this hasn't been moved and seconded, but I'd like to-
Yeah, you didn't allow anyone to second it. So you didn't allow anyone to second it as chair.
Yes. Okay, so you've moved it? Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Johnic. Councillor Madden, I'd like to move an amendment that, that we adopt the recommendations, I guess in, in two lots, one for items one and two, and then B for items three and four. This is not a matter of like the minutes where we just adopt what's, what's happened. This is actually that council adopt the recommendations. I don't agree with the recommendations at three, three and four, so I would like that opportunity to, to vote for that. I wish to speak to it. I've already spoken to it at the committee meeting. But if it's moved as a batch, I'm put in a very difficult situation where I support one and two, but not three and four.
Mayor, if you've moved an amendment, I'm happy to second it.
Yeah, I'll put the amendment there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to accept the amendment on the grounds of which you've stated. But I must say for the purposes for everyone, I don't think that that substantively, I, I don't agree with that interpretation. So perhaps that's something to explore at another point in time.
Okay. So you're happy to accept it or not? Because councillor Antonia said he was second, so-
I said that I'm happy to accept it, but I just want everyone to know that I don't accept the interpretation that you put forward this morning. If you want to explore that in a constructive way at another point in time, I'm more than open to.
Councillor Johnic, deputy mayor, are you happy to accept that?
I am, thank you.
Thank you very much for the indulgence. So the motion before us is that A, that council rec, adopt the recommendations of the committee and sport committee on the third of September, with exceptions of items three and four. That's the live one there. I'll hand back to you as the chair of that committee to speak to those matters.
Are we deliberating upon one and two or three and four firstly?
One and two.
Well, one and two was simply the meeting minutes for our previous meeting of the committee. And number two was a wonderful report on library services, which I'd encourage everyone to read again. If you, even if you've already read it, there's some good information there about what the community likes about our libraries and what they'd like to see more of, which is beneficial to us all moving forward.
Thank you. Deputy mayor, as the second, would you like to speak to the matter?
I have nothing further to add. Thanks, Mayor. I'll go up to the floor.
In that case, I'll put the, sorry, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. So the next recommendation is that council adopt the recommendations of three and four, items three and four. I'll just wait for the secretariat to put that up there. Would you like to move that, councillor Madden, or not?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And deputy mayor, yes, thank you. Okay. Do you wish to speak to those matters?
Yes, I'd like to thank the committee members who supported these motions at our committee meeting. Principally, it's about the council having an improved mechanism to work with council staff and other stakeholders to improve what council can do in the obvious spaces of the two topics, customer, libraries and customer services and the sport and recreation areas of council. I, since it's been split off to have a vote against it as if there's something wrong with it, I just have to publicly restate that the public interest is what's being pursued here. There's absolutely no desire here to move against transparency or inhibit council's decision making or the integrity of that. I actually personally find a level of offence that you haven't been able to work through this with me constructively. So I don't, I don't know why you have strong feelings against it, Mayor, but I recognise that your will today is to have your vote against it recorded again. But I just wanted to restate for anyone that I reject any negative connotations about the purposes and intent of these advisory committees. And I have to do so given that my name is attached to them. And I come into this chamber pursuing the best interests of Ipswich. And any assertions otherwise will be resolutely fought by me.
Thank you, councillor Madden. Deputy mayor, do you wish to speak to that as the second?
I think councillor Madden summed it up nicely and I support these two motions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you, obviously I'll, I'll speak against. I wasn't going to speak, but now that councillor Madden has said things. I guess for me, the, my major objections were transparency and also how communications would occur. And I'd say councillor Madden, you were the one that raised this as a notice of motion. So the onus was on you to communicate and, and reach out and, and discuss it. You did not do that. So the onus is on you to prosecute. My main concern, my understanding that some of the transparency matters are being addressed. My main concern is communication and making sure that as the chair of that, that you do communicate with all members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, in using my right of reply.
So, so I need to add it up to others first.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I wish to speak in favour of this. Certainly from my perspective, in the community, I've been getting a lot of feedback. And there is a level of frustration to a certain degree in certain aspects with respect to sport and rec. And I'm not, that's not an adverse comment against any of our staff or anything at all in relation to our staff. I have been working with the chairperson, sorry, the GM of that relevant area on some of those concerns and I've been getting some favourable responses from the GM. And I, I applaud him for his willingness to find solutions to those problems. But I do think that most of the sporting community particularly feel that they aren't, they aren't getting a sufficient voice in many respects or their concerns being raised. I applaud these advisory committees as an opportunity for transparency. And Mayor, in many respects, we already hold and conduct a number of advisory committees, which are open to the public. They are in many respects, even though they're not livestreamed, they are transparent. And I would, I would, I would suggest very strongly in many respects that to suggest otherwise would be somewhat offensive. Because we do hold and we meet regularly on many matters here in council. And just yesterday, we had a presentation in relation to the new planning scheme. Now, that meeting wasn't livestreamed, but you could hardly say that there was anything untoward with that meeting at all other than info share with the councillors. Now, in many respects, this is a golden opportunity for us to have a much more info share than we ordinarily would get at standing committees or this council meeting. Our standard meeting procedures policy is such that these meetings, the standing committees and council meetings are quite rigid in nature. There is, to a degree, a lack of flexibility in the ability to be frank, fearless, or even the promotion of brainstorming, think tanking and raising of ideas. So this is better served in an advisory committee. I commend the chairperson for pushing this forward. And I support the motion.
Thank you very much, councillor. I just did some of the things that you've raised. Yesterday's session on the planning scheme was a briefing session for new councillors to get up to date to the planning scheme. And it wasn't making any recommendations. My, I have had discussions with the CEO since then on the transparency. And I did say that the transparency matters I did raise last time-
Point of order, Mayor. Is this, is this part of debate or discussion or?
This part, this part has been moved and seconded. We're now discussing the, the recommendation.
You're just going back to the meeting- Point of, point of order.
Point of order. I am speaking. I am the chair. And please, we are discussing items three and four, and that's what we're doing here today. I did raise some concerns at the committee meeting about transparency. I had discussions with the CEO. I am comfortable with that and I did say that today in this meeting. My main concern is communication and making sure that information is shared with councillors. So I'm not cut out of things and none of the other councils are cut out. Is there any other discussion? Is that councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Chair. I'm supportive of this, but I just also would like to note the record that for me, communication is really important. We, we all have so many commitments within council, so I guess my concern is for those that may not make it on the advisory committee that they may be left out of the loop. And potentially the first they will become aware of a strategy, an idea would be at committee. So if it's about informing and driving strategy at that level of an advisory committee, it's important that all of us are taken on the journey. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Before, before we go to write replies, is there anything else? Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Just in relation to the mover of this motion in the committee, that was something that he discussed at committee about the, the importance of that communication, I think. And I don't want to take the words out of his mouth, so I'll let him talk about that in his right of reply. But I, I note your concerns and I think, I think they were addressed, but I'll let councillor Madden speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to write replies, does anyone else would like to make a comment? No? Councillor Madden's right of reply and then we go straight to the vote.
Well, I must say, in my right of reply, you spoke twice on the matter, Mayor. I wasn't afforded that opportunity to address some things that you had said. So I find that disappointing.
I'm comfortable for you to address other things.
Okay.
You know, I run meetings-
I couldn't do that previously, but we can talk about it later because we need to be more constructive about how we handle these sorts of disagreements. Just wanted to reiterate once more that this was all discussed at committee. It's quite, it's, it's, it's been really almost flogged to death that the concerns that you have will be addressed. So I myself sit here a little bemused by what's transpired this morning. But I'm looking forward to these committees moving. I am more than confident that once they're working and the work starts to churn out, the criticism will melt away because there'll be good mechanisms for this council to make improved decisions. So moving forward, I just really wouldn't like to see some of these things occurring in, in chambers when it's, yeah, I, for me, it just, it feels very undignified sometimes, the way that things occur in here.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those for, please raise your hand. It's everyone in the room except for myself. Those against are myself, so the motion is carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point four, which is the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, the third of September twenty twenty four. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how she would like that report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee number two thousand and twenty four, four of the third of September be received and adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
Just quickly through your indulgent, indulgence, can I request that item eight and nine be separated?
Thank you. My apologies, I've got item eight. What was item nine?
An item nine. So to move-
What is item nine?
Pardon?
At the economic, so item eight is the Nicholas Street Precinct retail sub-project. What, what is item nine?
Sorry, in my schedule, I have item eight as the welcome home civic ceremony and item nine as the membership for the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just see if councillor Augustine-
Sorry, Mayor, I'm just trying to get up to speed. I left my glasses at home, so everything's a bit blurry and not been told that this was going to be separated. So I'm just taking, just trying to get-
In that case, item eight is the, no submo, joint no submotion, the welcome home civic event. That if a city council organises a civic event in September. And the other one is the, normal, normally in council, we would permit any council, any, any request from a councillor to separate matters out. We would normally accommodate that, if I could provide that advice.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm just trying to work out which one.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. It's okay.
Yep, yep.
So, so councillor Augustine is happy to move that all items except eight and nine are considered. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. Thank you. So we're looking at all to items one to seven. So we moved a second, councillor Augustine. Do you wish to speak to that report, items one to seven?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'm extremely glad to see that the two thousand and twenty five senior netball state championships will be held at Limestone Park. The event will attract about two thousand two hundred participants and ninety nine percent of those are out of region. So that brings an economic impact to Ipswich of more than two point five million dollars. So it's a great sporting event again that, and I think in one of the reports, where we're in our sporting endeavours, we're actually, I agree, we are punching above our weight. We're starting to really get great outcomes. So this is another great event to attract to the city. Item two was the celebrate two thousand and twenty five at the Tivoli Drive-In. And that's the annual New Year's Eve event that aims to bring together the Ipswich community in celebrating the new year through music, dance, food and fireworks. And who doesn't like a good fireworks? Maybe the dogs, but everyone else does. So happy to support this event with fifteen thousand. And then also, then the three, item three was our relationship with Ipswich Region Chamber of Commerce. So really happy that the renewal of council's partnership with the chambers for the financial year of two thousand and twenty four and twenty five, as well as two thousand and twenty five, twenty six. So it's great that, to see the work continue in such an area and happy to continue with our thirty five thousand per annum contribution to the great work that the chambers do. Thanks, Mayor.
Deputy mayor, do you wish to speak to this?
No, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sorry, ma'am. I've just, just wished to again thank the council for their support of the netball state age event for next year. That is a large event for the city. Even though Queensland Netball have split the age groups up so that they are now over two different locations, it's still likely to bring some millions to our local economy, and because there is such a large attendance to that. And Ipswich Netball Courts are one of only a handful in the state that can host such a large event. And I'm very, very pleased for the Ipswich Netball Association. They are great promoters of netball. It's growing each year. And they are great hosts of such large events. So congratulations to them as well. And also with respect to item four, I just asked the community, not just in relation to this event, but also just to continue to promote the Tivoli Drive-In. It is one of the great nostalgia trips to go to the drive-in and experience a movie in the old fashioned way. And I certainly would commend people to go and take that in. And in doing so, they're not just keeping a, a drive-in alive, they're actually supporting a great community benefit there at Tivoli because they do such great community work in helping young people find jobs, as well as giving them hope for the future. So just ask the community to look at the Tivoli Drive-In as an option to take their family for a great night out.
Thank you, councillor Charlie. I heard a hear here from a Division Four councillor, councillor Matt, at the Tivoli Drive-In. And just reminded by that the state titles for the under sixteen's and eighteen's are at Nissan Arena this weekend, and we have Ipswich teams in both of those. I'll open up for any other discussion? Any, any write of reply? No one spoke against it. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to items. Do you want to wish, I'll just check items eight and nine separately?
Ah, yes, please, ma'am.
So we're looking at item eight. I'll, I'll move that. Item eight. I'm guessing councillor John, you wish to second that?
And I would just like to propose an amendment to that item.
Right.
And I have supplied the amendment to the clerk, to Vicky. So just to add B, that Ipswich City Council recognises the Olympians and Paralympians at the two thousand and twenty four Ipswich Sports Awards Ceremony, and that all councillors are afforded the opportunity to attend both events, and that the chairperson of the Community and Sport Committee be given the opportunity to speak at both events.
Well, as the mover, I, I don't have any issues with item B. See, I'm not sure. So I say I don't support that, but I'm guessing in that case you'll put it forward as an amendment then? Okay, so the deputy mayor's moving that as an amendment. Do you have a second for that amendment? Thank you, councillor Antonelli. We'll discuss just the, the amendment. Do you wish to say anything? I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, I think it's self-explanatory. I just wanted to make sure that we are all included, obviously, in this fantastic civic celebration. And because it is relating to sports in the whole, I just thought I'd take the opportunity to make sure that the chair of our Community and Sport Committee is given, given an opportunity to speak officially if he, if he would like.
I guess in speaking to the matter, I think in twenty twenty one, we did the same with the Tokyo Olympians. We invited them to the Ipswich Sports Awards, so I have no issue with that. I guess C, the Olympics is in the economic development portfolio, so normally the spokesperson would be the chair of the Economic Development Committee. So what you're saying that, and obviously all councils would obviously be, are always invited to the civic events and the sports awards.
I think it was just all encompassing, ma'am, and I'm not intending to exclude anyone from speaking opportunities. I was just adding that an extent, an extension or an invitation be afforded to the chair of Community and Sport also.
Right. Yes, councillor Tully.
Perhaps I could for, yeah, for, have to be a foreshadowed amendment to make that clear that it's not to exclude anyone, but that perhaps at the, it reads that the chairperson of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee and the chair of the Community and Sport Committee. To make, make, make no doubt that there's no intended exclusion.
Yeah. Under the council media policy, which the council must follow, myself and the chair of the Economic Development would automatically be speaking at that event, so I don't, it probably is probably needed, but I guess you're putting it forward.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but just for the sake of clarity that there's no intended exclusion, that what you say is right, but to have both there makes it, makes it clear that the, that the former is not excluded.
Right. Knowing that the Olympics is under economic and cultural development, is there a reason why we would open this up to a third speaker from council?
I think that the relationship between sports and community and the Olympics don't need any commentary. Like, it's pretty clear that it's about, the Olympics are in relation to sport. Not that they're not in relation to economic development as well, but I think it's just part of our city being afforded the opportunity for both chairs to be celebrated and included, to foster relationships and representation, good representation.
Does that mean we should include in B that, that the sports awards, which obviously the sports chair would always speak at, that the chair of economic development should also speak there?
I don't see any problem with that.
If I, with respect to, pardon me, through the chair, with respect to the Olympics component of that meeting, then that opportunity should be given, I would, I would presume. It's just as a natural fit. And just for clarity, I'm, as a second of the initial amendment, I'm more than happy for councillor Tully's amendment to be included in the initial amendment, if the mover is so inclined.
I'm willing. Thank you.
I'll just let you update. I don't know if you're going to foreshadow. I think you're going to, we're dealing with the amendment, I guess, yes.
I, I did use the word foreshadowed, but it was basically an amendment upon an amendment.
To the amendment.
Sorry.
I think that might be a bit, a bit, if, since the mover of that amendment is, is, is accepted that. While remending that, I did make the suggestion or the amendment for, to make sure that the chair of Economic and Cultural Development can speak at the sports awards, and I think there was an understanding, councillor, deputy mayor, you said at the time that you would be okay with that?
Absolutely.
Yep. So if I could put that in as an item B? The chair of Economic and Cultural Development, as well as the chair of Sport and Community, because, and Community.
Through the chair.
Sorry, ma'am. I've had my thing on for, oh, probably about five minutes now, but it just seems that people just press and just talk.
Oh, sorry, my.
So we're supposed to just ask for your.
My, my apologies.
No, no, it's not. I'm just saying.
I just, can I just let minute Clark finish that, and then I'll go to you, councillor Augustine. Thank you, councillor Augustine.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, I sit here very, very extremely disappointed. From the previous chair reports, we talk about open communication. Everything that's happened on that screen there, and deputy mayor, putting this forward, again, councillor Madsen was, you know, disappointed in the mayor's response to things. This wasn't brought to me. I'm the chair of this committee. Nowhere was it even posed to me about this amendment. So if we're going to talk about being disappointed, or we're going to be open and transparent with communication, I think as deputy mayor, you should come to me and say that, at least put this forward, that this was going to be put forward. The first I've known of it is just then. And so hopefully going forward, that communication is open and also transparent to everyone going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So just before we go anywhere, just, if I could just tick one thing on the, on the motions there. See, yes, see, see, looks a little bit, I think there was something about all the councils attending, even though all of them were going to be attending. But I thought there was something there from councillor John, that original one. Yeah, all councils obviously would be attending. They're always invited to the sports awards and every civic event, so, but if it wants to be there. So, sorry, councillor Tully, I know there's a few people there, lots of, but yes.
Same line that doesn't see, basically replicate paragraph B. Talks about both committee chairs.
Yeah, it does, actually. It does.
Yeah, so.
We could do that. I'll just check with councillor Johnny. If you're, we could, if we just kept it A, B and removed C, would that fulfil what you were?
That will simplify it. I'm happy with that, ma'am.
Yes, councillor Doyle.
May, I just also add, I just want to note councillors, firstly, I want to note councillor Augustine's commentary. I have the utmost respect for councillor Augustine, as well as the other chairs, and disappointed that she's feeling, I guess, that her responsibilities under her committee may be eroded in some way by this, in saying that I'm just conscious, despite what we sitting around this table might think, I'm pretty sure our community doesn't want to hear from a whole raft of politicians on the day. So I do worry about how this might unfold, you know, three speakers in a row. So I just wonder if it's not just speak, is it not be given the opportunity to speak and or present? I have great confidence in my colleagues that it could be worked out behind the scenes, who's doing what role on the day.
At, at our sports awards, we've always shared the, the presentations of the awards with every single, same with everyone that's there.
Yeah, a literal interpretation of this now means that we will have three people on council speaking. And, and this is not to take away from the opportunity that is being sought for councillor Madsen at all. I'm just in my mind, looking at what this event might look like, and three people speaking. Anyway, just my thoughts for what they're worth.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. So I guess we're still discussing whether to have this amendment or not. So we need to vote, because I, when you put that forward as the mover, I did agree. So this is the amendment. This is the amendment that you're putting forward, councillor Johnny, that councillor Antonelli. Also, second, would that be correct? So we're not voting on the matter substantively, we're just voting to, on the amendment, to have the amendment. So just, can I just double check that you're, this is the amendment that you're after?
Correct.
Deputy mayor and councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. So we're just voting that we could go to an amendment, not on the actual matter. We'll discuss the matter next.
Yes, I, I was just obviously wondering the opportunity to discuss.
We'll do it. Sorry?
As the second of the motion.
If you wish to, again, we're just discussing having the amendment.
Okay, you're just, okay, just clarifying. I thought you were going straight to the vote. My apologies, ma'am. If I may, I, I must say that I would be, I would be deeply disturbed if the act, oh, sorry, the deputy chairperson for sport, community and sport wasn't involved heavily, as is the chairperson in the sports award. So I think that that would be, or should be, something that would be considered as part of organising that event. And I guess to, to the same degree, I would feel the same with respect to any exclusion of the sports chair with respect to the Olympics celebration. So I just put that out there. I don't see this as anything that can't be managed through good preparation before each of those events. And as, and I concur wholeheartedly with councillor Doyle, when she said that surely all parties can get their heads together to, to work through this and, and make it happen, and make it happen in a way that is fluid, so that all the appropriate people are involved.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, we'll go to, do you wish to say anything else?
Just in a, um, reply, I guess, to this amendment, there was no malice in me wanting to, wanting to amend this today. It was just for the inclusion. We, I personally have different experiences in this new term of council on how inclusive and cooperative things behind the theme, scenes can be. So I guess this is a way to ensure inclusiveness in my mind. And I apologise to councillor Augustine for not sharing this with you earlier. But there's no malice intended. Thank you.
In that case, we go to the vote just on the, whether this is the amendment that we'll be looking to debate. Those in.
A, a point of order about what we're voting. It's very confusing on the screen. Sorry, sorry if I'm the one who puts my hand up.
So we're supposed to go straight to a vote. So we've had a, can I just say that the mover has done a write of reply, so we can't have any other discussion. We need to go to that, so I'll let, but I will allow.
I'm clarifying what we're voting.
I know.
Thank you. So you've got.
A and B.
That, that's already been agreed to, A and B?
No, A and B haven't been agreed, they've been agreed to by the mover and the second, but we haven't voted on it. So can you show me what, could you please display what is going, what is put forward, what is currently? If we could just leave that screen there, that'd be great.
So that's, sorry, that's what's been, and the proposed amendment we're about to vote on is the, the new paragraph B, is that correct? Thank you.
Can I just check with my paragraph B? And I think I was talking about the fact that all councillors would be, I think that was, I mean, that would happen anyway. Okay. So can we go back to the A and B that was? Keep going down. It's my understanding that's what we're voting on, that A and B that's seated there. That Ipswich City Council organises a civic event in September that provides the community to honour the remarkable achievements of Ipswich Olympians and Paralympians. Well, that's already happening. That's, that's what was part of the previous report. But B, that the chairperson of the Economic Development Committee, as well as the chairperson of the Community and Sport Committee, be afforded the opportunity to attend and speak at the Ipswich City Council twenty twenty four Ipswich Sports Awards Ceremony to recognise the Olympian and Olympians. Okay, we have removed something there. But also it's meant to be the, I think the intent was to have it the civic ceremony as well.
Afforded the opportunity to speak at both events. That's correct.
To attend, not for the all to speak. Maybe I'll go back to, if I can make a suggestion, councillor Johnny, if we go to maybe that B and C again, that the all councillors are invited to both events, as they always are anyway, and C is the, is what's going to happen with the speaking parts. Councillor Tully's shaking his head.
I thought C was gone because it basically replicated B. But then the way the proposed B is now is that it's taken out the, it's got all the councils.
May I just go back to councillor, the deputy mayor's original?
So for you, Vicky, if you just li, if you go down to the current B, sorry, in a bold, that the chairperson of the economic and the chairperson of the community in sports are afforded the opportunity to speak at both events? are afforded the opportunity to speak at both events?
Okay. Do you mind if I could just get you read out B, just so on live stream people can, if that's okay, deputy mayor?
Yeah, that the chairperson of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, as well as the chairperson of the Community and Sport Committee, are afforded the opportunity to speak at both events and that all councillors be afforded the opportunity to attend the Ipswich City Council 2024 Ipswich Sports Awards Ceremony and no, just at both events. And that all councillors be afforded the opportunity to attend both events.
There's no reference to the sport awards in that particular motion. Can I just mention that all councils are always invited to all sports awards and art awards and any civic, citizenship ceremonies, everything?
I think that's why I had paragraph B and C originally. Because B was calling for the council to recognise the Olympians and Paralympians at that 2024 Ipswich Sports Awards.
Yes.
And C.
Like we did in 2021. I'll leave it to the deputy mayor, she's the one that's moving the amendment. She has the floor.
So the A remains the same. B is that the Ipswich City Council recognise the Olympians and Paralympians at the 2024 Ipswich Sports Awards Ceremony. And C could be. Ipswich City Council recognise the Olympians and Paralympians at the 2024. And then C. I think that sums it up.
I think the word Paralympian needs an S at the end as well, oh, you got it, thanks.
Yes, could you remove?
That the chairperson of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee and the Community and Sport Committee, as well as all councillors, be afforded the opportunity to attend both events. And that, so that the chairperson of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee and Community and Sport be afforded the opportunity to speak at both events.
Just checking, that's, and I'll just, councillor Tully, read over it as well?
Could I suggest that because the chairs of the two committees are councillors, that the first reference to them, it should just read.
Impact.
That all councillors be afforded the opportunity to attend both events?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it continues on, that the chairperson of those two committees be afforded the opportunity to speak at both events. I think that makes it a little less clumsy.
Thank you.
So I'll just count, deputy mayor, A, B and C, you're comfortable with?
I am comfortable, thank you.
The second of that amendment, councillor Antonelli?
Yes, agreed.
You're comfortable with, thank you. You did have a right of reply, I'll just offer you that opportunity again, deputy mayor.
I've summarised my right of reply, thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you, I move that to the vote. So just purely, are we going to go forward with this amendment? That's what the vote is before us, the amendment, if it goes forward, if it's voted up, then we'll discuss the merits of A, B and C. If it doesn't, we go back to the original motion, is that clear? If you'd like to have this amendment put before you, please raise your hand. So it's councillor Madison, councillor Augustine, councillor Johnny, councillor Tully, councillor Antonelli, councillor Madden for. Those against, myself and councillor Doyle. So that amendment has carried. So the live motion before us now is that A, that motion A, B, C, I'll just let Vicky catch up. Myself and councillor Doyle. Thank you. Okay, as the mover, deputy mayor, would you like to speak to those three motions?
I have nothing further to add, I think I've summarised it previously, thanks, mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Antonelli, as a second, would you like to speak to it?
No, thank you, I think we've had enough discussion.
Thank you. I guess in speaking against this, I think that we have committees for a reason, that to share it broadly does undermine the chair of that particular committee, the Olympics does belong to the Economic and Development Committee. And I think it's only fair that it goes in accordance with the, so I'll be voting against this, obviously. And in regards to making sure that all councils are invited to both events, that has been what's happened every other, well, I can't speak for the previous councils, but certainly last term and this term, that every council has always been invited and always presented awards. Same with art awards, citizenship, there's just, everyone's invited to any civic event, the keys to the city, that's always happened. So I appreciate that it's there, but I think it was probably not required. Although, open up for any other discussion?
Oh, thank you, Chair, just briefly, want to note the record, I, in principle, I wouldn't have objected to this had I been given a bit of a heads up and able to get an understanding from the organisation about how they will operationalise this. I think it's going to be difficult and potentially clunky having three elected reps speaking. But hopefully.
Thank you. In that case, I'll hand over to the deputy mayor, oh, sorry, councillor Augustine.
Thanks, ma'am. I think sometimes we get, the translation in sport gets lost in what this actually is, this is actually a ceremony. And it comes underneath the Economic and Cultural Development Chair. Again, I'll put my, you know, my thoughts forward, people have a voice. There's been ample opportunity to put this forward, we talk about again, communication. Hopefully going forward, you know, I can be afforded a bit of a discussion around, especially my chair. Yeah, I'm happy to, anyone wants to speak at it, go ahead, I don't care who speaks at it, but yeah, just. Yeah, thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, I guess the other thing I'd like to note that we have a unique opportunity, myself being on the BOCO board, I was voted by the South East Queensland Council of Mayers to be their representative on that particular board, anything to do with the Olympics. Certainly would love for you to run by me, we do have a unique, you know, resource of myself here, as well as the chair of Economic Development Committee. So it would be great if we could share, I know none of us are perfect, but that would be great in going forward, thank you. If there's anyone else who'd like to say anything, yes, councillor Madison?
Thank you, ma'am, just wanted everyone to know, I'm flying by the seat of my pants on this one. Couldn't really come into the council meeting, having well-rounded gathered thoughts on this particular topic. I do think it's worth mentioning though that one thing that a former media policy was a struggle for the council and the current one is as well, is that sometimes there is alignment across portfolios. And at times a harsh line is drawn where perhaps it better serves the council for us to not be using harsh lines like that. I do think that there's obvious connections to the grassroots sporting community of Ipswich. But I must state that I'm not interested in undermining the role of councillor Augustine in any of these events whatsoever. But it's just a celebration of Ipswich Olympians and Paralympians, people that are involved in the sporting network of Ipswich and they use sporting facilities and sporting associations. And there's a whole moving element of that, that isn't. There is some other elements and I'm not, I'm just saying that, I don't think it's an instance of this is 100% only this. So I think, again, need to get better at having these sorts of conversations. Indeed, because yeah, believe it or not, there are people who put things before council and yes, they don't talk to me about it. We covered that in my committee meeting, just seven days ago, ma'am. So yeah, that's a big learning curve for everyone. But just wanted to restate that, that all the time council business arises and there's multiple portfolios that it touches on. And at times, a story will go one way or another and not really highlight some of the things that the council's doing in another portfolio.
I think the other thing is too, is that we do have a civic celebrations working group as well, these are things that would normally be discussed there rather than here. And that might have been another way for us to look at it, there's always many ways to skin a cat. Councillor, if there's anything else, I'll go to the deputy mayor, right of reply before we vote?
I'm right to move on, ma'am.
Thank you, those in favour of A, B and C, please raise your hand, thank you. It's councillor Madison, councillor Augustine, councillor Johnny, councillor Tully, councillor Antonelli and councillor Madden. Those against, myself and councillor Doyle, the motion is carried, thank you. We go to item, I think nine now, actually before that, it's now 10.15, so I'll move that we have a 30 minute adjournment and come back at 10.45. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, thank you, it's unanimous in the room, we'll see you back at 10.45, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the council meeting of the 12th of September 2024 and it's ten fifty two. Apologies for being seven minutes later than expected. We're now on to still on the Economic and Cultural Development Committee report. We're on item nine, which is the membership of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee. And that particular one councillor Doyle was appointed to be a member of that committee. And I understand councillor John, you were wanting to pull that out separately to discuss that matter.
Just to offer an amendment to include councillor Jim Madden and councillor Jacob Madsen as members of that committee as well. So this is a simple one, Mayor. Simple amendment, I promise.
Again, I think it'd be really great if people shared these things before.
And apologies for not sharing before. I've just been approached by both councillors recently and just wanted to add this in.
I I I note that amendment forward and I'm guessing that's what you're moving. Um, I'll I'll guess, um, do we have someone seconding that? Uh, councillor Jay, um, since it's been that amend, whether we do that amendment is being discussed, do you wish to, I guess my my initial thoughts is could we do this in the Economic and Cultural Development Committee rather than, I feel like we're bypassing the chair of that committee again. That would be my only thing. I don't have any objections to either of you being part of that that committee. But I just thought it'd be better to go through the the committee process rather than just coming straight to the ordinary.
In my mind, and it was, um, uh, no disrespect to the chair of that committee. It was simply to get them, um, involved when they decided to become involved so that they didn't miss an opportunity at next month's committee. Um, so it was more of a timing situation. It was not an at any offence to the chair of the committee involved.
I think at last, at the active committee, um, I think councillor sort of sat as an observer and was able to participate if she wanted to. And then I guess came to it. Um, again, that's just just my view. So that's the you're putting forward that, um, one that councillor Doyle is appointed as per the active cultural committee. And B, that councillor Jim Madden, councillor Jacob Madison are also members of that committee. That's what you're putting forward.
That's the wording.
And councillor Jay has seconded that. So that's the, um, because it hadn't, because that motion hadn't been moved and seconded, I'll take that as being moved and seconded. Um, do you wish to speak to that councillor Johnic?
Nothing, um, other than, um, I believe that councillor Madsen and councillor Madden will and councillor Doyle will make, um, great additions to the, um, the committee involved. And I look forward to the working them with them on that committee.
Thank you. Councillor Delly as the second, do you wish to speak to this?
Oh, yeah, no, I I second that. I do believe that, um, um, the three of them have, um, uh, a lot of economic and business sense to bring to the committee and add to that um, already, um, what was one of the smallest committees at one stage now appears to be one of the largest. So, um, a lot of interest in it. Thank you.
Mars, the the chair of that committee, has this been discussed with you previously, councillor Augustine?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, once again, uh, nothing's been raised with me. We just had a thirty minute meeting where the deputy mayor could have come to me and broached this with me. Councillor Madsen walked out there, he could have broached it with me. Councillor Madden could have broached it with me, but still silence from the very I've raised this once before, from the eleventh of April, that I wasn't in every committee. That I don't get involved in any discussions on anything. So quite disappointed, quite disappointed, extremely disappointed. Um, that you couldn't come to me, um, and even broach this one with me. For me, I feel something's afoot, but let's, um, let's go with it. Anyone can be part of a committee. But I just think we talk about, um, community, uh, communication. And that was one of the 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 things that I think the deputy mayor said that she was going to be extremely good at. Um, going in as the deputy mayor, and I think that is very lacking. And that's just my personal opinion, how things are falling out right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Look, if further discussion, yes, councillor Madsen?
Yeah, I'd just like to address that. Look, um, I only really indicated a view that I'd be interested in going on to the committee properly, honestly, about twenty minutes ago with everyone that was in the, um, lunchroom. Um, and that was just in the head, it's been, in my head, it's been rolling around. I'm on the Community and Sport Committee, I'm on the Environment Sustainability Committee, this committee meets in between. Um, I was the deputy chair of the Economic and Industry Development Committee in the previous term. There's some, um, knowledge that I have from the economic development strategy that councillor Johnic, uh, led us council to work on and adopt. Um, so I think there's something that I can contribute. I can assure everyone there's no real conspiracy whatsoever. It's just a case of I'm there anyway, so might as well, uh, partake and contribute what I can.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the matter? In in speaking to this, again, I have no issue with councillor Madden or councillor Madison being on this committee at all. I have never said no to any councillor wanting to, you know, to step up and be on a committee. I think it's fantastic. My only thing is the process. Uh, we talked earlier about people being inclusive and making sure that they will be an inclusive person and they would communicate. That's clearly not happening. So it does feel, for those of us who aren't included, does feel political, it does feel personal. And in particular, this is the second time now I have seen where I think that the Chair of Economic Development has been undermined. I ask us all, could we please communicate better, uh, making sure that we are actually inclusive? I'll then hand over to.
Can I address something there?
Yeah, sure. I'll I'm happy for you to speak more than once.
It's a very, I I believe my interpretation is quite valid, that prima facie, the council, when it meets as the elected council, creates committees and appoints people to committees. Um, so I actually think it's fine for us to talk about these things on live stream. We're not committing resources, it's actually councillors taking on more responsibilities. Um, that's not anything that requires a long-running discussion or debate of months in advance. Um, it's for the council to appoint people to committees. And really, we're going, just going to be a member of a committee. What what's the material item beyond that, other than these councillors agreeing to be on the committee and doing work?
I don't think anything illegal is being done here, but from a, I think a relationship building and good governance, it would be would be the done thing to speak to the chair. And I'll just remind you, councillor Madsen, when I texted you at eight o'clock this morning saying, hey, can we divide those matters up? You admonished me for not for not giving you time and 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 so on. So I'm just asking for that same respect that you've asked for. And that's, and I think it'd be, things would go on much smoother if, because when that doesn't happen, it does make, get people's hackles up, it does make people think things are political or afoot, uh, and it does feel quite personal.
Um, if I can respond to that, um, I think perhaps we need to unpack our text exchange from this morning, um, later. Um, there's a bit more to it than what you've alleged as the chairperson, um, in my opinion. And that's something I think we should discuss constructively. But, um, yeah, really, a council meeting is somewhere where you can discuss council decisions. Like prima facie, this is the number one place to do it.
I guess I'd ask, if someone was recommending that another person was on the Sport and Community Committee, would you like to have that person discuss it with you as the chair? I know they don't have to, but would you?
I, if any, for the public record, any members of council who are not members of that committee, you can ask me at any time and my response will be all aboard. Then I'll try to make a steam boat noise pretty poorly. Um, because, yeah, no concerns for me whatsoever.
So again, I that, I'm again, I'm not querying, um, yourself or councillor Johny, it's the math, the method and the way that that we could be working much better as a group. If you, you know, if if someone wants to join a committee, at least have a bit of a chat with the chair, I think, is a, is a, um, is a courtesy. Yes, councillor Delly.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more with respect to communication, Mayor. Look, I think that, um, one of the things that we, um, um, this is perhaps a matter that we can, uh, work on better through, uh, uh, further roundtable meetings of the councillors. Um, we've had the one, um, after five months. It would be, um, it would be good if we could have them more regularly so that, um, some of these things could be vented and discussed, um, more freely, uh, in that forum. If that could happen more frequently, Mayor, that would be I think that would be welcomed by all of us.
Thank you, councillor Delly. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Augustine.
Sorry, Mayor, I was just going to say, that's right, councillor, um, Madsen. You just said if people would come to you and discuss it, you'd be more than happy to have anyone aboard to toot. That's right. You would be happy if they came to discuss it with you. That's what I would like as well in return. People come to me and discuss it with me would be fantastic, but that's not what's happened. And it, for me, it just feels like it keeps on continually, 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 um, happening. So, yeah.
Yeah, if I can just respond to that.
To myself, yes.
I appreciate what you've raised this morning, councillor Augustine. I appreciate what you've raised this morning councillor Augustine. Um, the only thing that I disagree with is, I'm of the, I personally was trying to express some of the view if something comes up at a council meeting, like a suggestion like that at a moment's notice. Something like this where no council resources are um, committed to anything and it's merely, um, somebody being on a committee and, yeah, for me personally, it's, it's, it's different, but I understand that um, you have some broader issues with custom and practice, which I actually think we all share. Um, so I want to recognise that, but just restate that my own personal view is I'm happy for things to come up in a council meeting and deliberate upon them. Um, if ever were something to come up here that was to urgently give money without a proper business case or, um, science behind it, um, I would be looking to have that, um, come back to a future meeting with a report so that we could appropriately deliberate. But I think it's a materially different item personally, and I'm happy for people to disagree. That's just my own view of, um, council business and how it evolves.
So councillor Madison, you say that, but this morning when I asked if we could raise matters up in two different matters.
Uh, Mayor, if I may.
Excuse me, can't interrupt me, I'm the Chair, if you, as per our meeting conduct policy. Um, you know, I did that this morning and it didn't involve any money. It was respectful, I sent you a text before. And you, and you've, just so I could vote the same way I did in the committee, and you did everything you could to stop me, so.
That's because, Mayor.
Excuse me, I am speaking, please, I've asked you once, please don't make me pull you up for unsuitable meeting conduct. Um, so I think, I'm just saying you've said this now in moving, going forward, that would be great.
Yeah, well, I would just say, um, that there's some aspects of your voting pattern on that that we need to discuss in private, because I'm completely and utterly confused by some of the things that you've said on it. And, um, that needs to go down that path. I really don't, I really had no understanding of the difference, but anyway, it's not worth actually discussing here. It went beyond the point. Um, it's not for the, I, I think we need to refocus on meeting procedure, because there's been a lot of back and forth. And it's awkward with yourself as chairperson when it's really a conversation that should occur in a more constructive forum.
I'm sorry that me being the Chair of this committee as voted by the people, which is awkward for you, but this is the, this is democracy and this is what we've been given. So if we could keep to the matter at hand, the matter at hand is, um, whether yourself and councillor Madden, um, as well as what was agreed at the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, um, uh, welcomed on that committee, and, um, if there's anything else on that particular matter. Now, I'll hand over to, uh, the Deputy Mayor, who was the mover of this, for her right of reply.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, apologies to the Chair for not coming to you earlier in relation to this. Um, it was just brought to my attention that councillor Madison would like to join also within that last break. And then I also needed to go to the toilet quite urgently, but, um, I understand what you're, where you're coming from and communication is something that I want more in this, um, um, in, you know, between the councillors and elected reps. Um, I do organise our fortnightly elected reps meeting, um, and happy for you to accept um, to come aboard to those meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item fifteen point five, which is the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the third of September twenty twenty four. And I'll hand it to the, to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed.
Uh, thanks very much, Chair. Um, as Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Committee, I, I move to accept a report. Uh, the report has, it appears in the agenda, and also the recommendations as they appear in the agenda. And Mayor, I'd just like to say a few words on each of the items.
Absolutely. We'll just have someone to second that. Thank you councillor Janley. Yeah, councillor Madden, would you like to speak to the matter?
Right. Um, uh, with regard to item, with regard to item two, um, Queens Park Environmental Education Centre operational update, uh, recently or not long ago, councillor Augustine and myself had the opportunity to attend a an art exhibition, which was excellent. But it also was a great opportunity for both of us to see the improvements that have been made with regard to the children's displays. And I'd like to compliment the council staff that not only, uh, service the educational centre, but make decisions like that lead to excellent exhibitions at the Environmental Education Centre. That's with regard to item two. Uh, with regard to item three, this is a report that concerns the progress of establishment, establishing and implementing the disaster awareness camera network, uh, DACN, commonly called flood cameras. It describes activities undertaken thus far and plans to roll out the DACN camera network across the Ipswich LGA, uh, Chair, I was pleased to see an announcement today that, um, uh, the Department of Transport and Main Roads have allowed, uh, public access to their camera at, uh, College's Crossing, which is on the, on the Karana Down side of, of the river, uh, in a much better position than our camera. And, uh, that will be available at all times for those residents in the area that need to use College's Crossing, particularly in times of flood. Thankfully, um, we now have a, a high-level bridge at Mount Crosby, so whereas previously those residents were isolated when the College's Crossing weir went over, which was a dangerous exercise in its own right, crossing a long weir that's a single-lane weir. There's now a, a, a two-lane bridge that can take the buses and heavy vehicles across, uh, uh, Mount Crosby Bridge. Um, Mayor, with regard to item four, this is an update, uh, report on the continual implementation of the Ipswich City Council Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive, uh, following the review of the directive as presented, uh, at ordinary, uh, council meeting on the twenty-third of May. Um, I'd just like to mention and congratulate those council staff that organised this week's youth sustainability, uh, summit. Um, a number of councillors attended and, uh, we all had a great time. Uh, there were schools making present, primary schools making presentations right across, uh, from right across Ipswich. But, um, of course, I have to recognise that the one school that came from Division Four, which was Brassel State School, and I congratulate not just the students that made a contribution on that day, which was excellent, um, but also the staff that, um, that were there. And I was, uh, at the break after that session, I was very pleased to be able to share some fruit from my garden with the, uh, with the students. And, uh, they couldn't pronounce it, but I can, chapodocabi, and it's also called Brazilian grapes. And, uh, I got mixed reviews about the, the Brazilian grapes councillor Antonelli got mixed reviews. Skin was tough, uh, they never tasted anything like it, but, um, I did get positive reviews as well. Um, now, the final item I'd like to talk about, which is actually a very important item, is a report concerning Ipswich City Council's financial contribution to the Resilient Rivers Initiative, um, whereby Ipswich City Council will make a contribution of, uh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, um, being the financial contribution for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, um, financial year. Um, Ipswich has, uh, has two main rivers, as we all know, the Bremer River and the Brisbane River. And they both have, uh, incredible history. And part of that history involves, um, a voyage up the river by Alan Cunningham and John Oxley, um, in eighteen twenty-four. Um, it was actually September eighteen twenty-four, which is two hundred years this month. Um, of interest is that they pitched camp one night at Borough Point. And thereby Alan, uh, John Oxley claims to have named the Bremer River, having camped at the mouth of the river. Uh, they went a little bit further. It appears they, they ran out of food or had difficulties rowing up the river and they turned around, around about Pine Mountain. Um, and Pine Mountain in a roundabout way is, is, uh, named by John Oxley, but he didn't call it Pine Mountain. He called it Pine Ridge. And later, it was, um, it was called Pine Mountain, but, um, it's interesting that on that voyage, uh, uh, Alan Cunningham, who was a botanist, um, uh, collected specimens of hoop pine. And, uh, by way of doing so, hoop pine was named after him, um, in the species name. Our, the genus is aracharia, uh, and the species is cunning hammy. Um, and just the final thing I'd like to say, um, about it, at the time that, uh, they'd made that voyage, we all called it the Bris- Brisbane River. Um, the Aboriginal name, um, for the Brisbane River is Mewa. And in recognition of that, um, not long ago, the, uh, state electorate of, uh, of Indrapilly was renamed Mewa, and it sits on the Brisbane River, or I should say on Mewa. Thanks, Mayor. That's my contribution, and I invite my fellow councillors to make any contributions they wish with regard to the items in the report.
Thank you. So councillor Janley is the secondor, would you like to speak to?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, um, firstly, uh, with respect to item two, the Queens Park Environmental Education Centre, I'd just take this opportunity. We are, uh, only a few days out from the school holidays, so, uh, I'd just remind those mums and dads that may be watching today, um, that there is a golden opportunity coming up to, um, take their children, um, those that may need some, um, uh, stimulation to go to the Queens Park Environmental Education Centre, see what activities they can do with them there. But also, of course, the nature centre being only a hundred metres or so away there in Queens Park. It's a great opportunity. I'm sure that, uh, during the school holidays, the visitation of both those centres will be, um, quite high. Uh, in relation to, uh, item four, uh, the, um, yes, I'd like to, um, particularly pay mention to all the schools that attended the other day as well as part of our Environment and Sustainability Summit. Um, I happened to be present at all three, um, of those sessions, uh, because I had schools, a number of schools across the division, um, that attended that day. But one of the things that was quite remarkable is that the, um, um, the ideas that were coming from, um, young minds. Uh, obviously, some of the brightest and, um, smartest people in our city. Um, and I think that our city's in great hands if those young people come forward, uh, or grow, continue to grow with environment and sustainability in mind. Um, and, uh, also with respect to, um, John Oxley and Cunningham, if only they had an opportunity, uh, while they were out without food, to partake in some of the Brazilian grapes that, um, councillor Madden had brought with him that day, um, they may well have continued further. Um, may I, um, also talk to item three, um, just very briefly, our extensive, uh, network of, of cameras, um, along our creeks and rivers, which will be very useful, um, to us in times of disaster awareness. And also, uh, only yesterday, we, or the day before, we were informed that Department of Transport and Main Roads are sharing with us one of their cameras near uh, College's Crossing, which is very fortunate and certainly saves in doubling up on infrastructure.
Thank you. Open the floor to others. Yes, councillor Tolly?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. I just, um, to councillor Madden in relation to, uh, item three, the, the camera, particularly the one now at Karana Downs, the Main Roads camera pointing back towards College's Crossing. I'm intrigued online where they've got the, um, all of the state cameras, you know, throughout the state, that most of them are upgraded every sixty seconds, twenty-four seven. But it explicitly states on the, uh, one at College's Crossing, that it's updated every thirty minutes between six AM and six PM. Now, I find that quite odd, um, that in the event of a flood, things can change in, in thirty minutes. And, uh, depending upon the lighting at night, um, which, which, you know, can be moonlit or what, people may still want to, you know, see, see the, in summer, of course, that's, you know, it's getting light just after four o'clock, so, um, I could just ask the organisation.
Maybe a question on notice?
Well, through the Chair, um, uh, to, to follow that up with the Department of Transport and Main Roads.
Just put as a, a question on us about the TMR.
Thank you.
Yeah, thirty seconds to be in line with other TMR cameras. Thank you. Any other discussion? I guess I just wanted to, um, highlight obviously, um, item five, uh, councillor matter with, uh, Pine Mountain, where my husband grew up, so he's very, uh, very partial, he grew up in Muley. And, uh, we do, we don't know whereabouts in Pine Mountain, but we do know on the twenty-first of September, twenty, uh, nineteen twenty-four, they did actually stop when they got those sections of the, the hoop pine, so, um, pity we didn't know exactly where, but, um, it's interesting reading the diaries. And, um, to item three, it's great to see these flood cameras. They were an outcome of the flood review that we did in twenty twenty-two, um, to how we could, uh, continue our journey in being flood resistant, uh, resilient. So it's, um, great to see this progressing and, um, and how much people have, um, taken up the disaster dashboard, which was actually, I think, mandated by the state government, that all councils have that, so it's good to see that that's, um, you know, continuing to, to do well. And it's great that we're able to expand that network without any cost to the rate payers of Ipswich as well. Um, is there anything else? Councillor Madden, no one spoke against anything in reply. Okay, so I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item sixteen point one, which are the officers' reports. Uh, no, we have some, but we also have some late ones, and I'll, I'll deal with those in a moment, but, um, item sixteen point one is the CEO Organizational Performance Report for August twenty twenty-four. And I move, um, to receive and note the contents here. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you councillor Madden.
Um, in speaking to this, um, it's great to see that our creative industries and people, um, uh, and that we are continuing to provide opportunities for the creative industry to build capacity and to strengthen the local arts scene. It was great to see the transformation of Fire Station One O One, One O One into spaces that nurture creative talents. Um, this was a suggestion from the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group and the twenty twenty-three creators, creators of Ipswich Summit. Um, they asked for us to make room for digital content creation as well as spaces for workshops. So it's great to see, um, that our community, uh, come forward with practical suggestions that will help them and to see their council, um, enact those, um, as well. So we're shaping a strong way forward for our musicians, creators, artists and performers with this new venue. Another great example of collaboration and all three levels of government working together has been able to secure the eighteen million dollar funding from the South East Queensland, uh, Livability Fund. Uh, this was part of the South East Queensland deal that was signed by all three levels of government back in March twenty twenty-two. So it's great to see this money being realised. And council will be spending, um, our, we'll be spending our component with the Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve and the Tivoli Sports Complex and spending uh, those facilities and fields to meet the growing, the fast-growing population that we have. I want to thank the Australian Government and the Queensland Government, and also Council of Mayor, South East Queensland, for brokering this, this partnership and, and how it will support the wellbeing and health of our community. Uh, great to see the new canteen at the Ipswich and West Morton BMX Club and Wiley Street, as well as the first aid room, the toilets and the storage. It's fantastic. It was a two-point-one million dollar upgrade. I think half a million was from the States, from the States, so it's great to see, um, that being used uh, to its full amount. Um, in Ipswich, we have more than two hundred and twenty volunteers, uh, with the Ipswich City SES unit to support our community. Uh, they will receive two new all-terrain vehicles and trailers so they can maintain safety and resilience in disaster. Um, council has secured eighty thousand dollars from the state government in funding, and, and that will fund, um, seventy-five percent of the, um, of the, um, um, those vehicles. Great to see community consultation of River Hart Parklands is underway. I know it takes a little bit more time and it's taken some time for us to get the engineers and everyone together, but it's not straightforward. Um, there is not just the damage with the overwater structures, we actually have, uh, corrosion in, in the, that, that switchback and a few other things. So we really do need to put our minds together to see what we can do, knowing that area is going to continually flood. So really looking forward, um, to people coming together and giving us suggestions. There's a pop-up today at the Bob Gamble Park and also on Saturday at Riverlink at ten AM. Um, obviously, we've been looking at the Ipswich Show Holiday, that's later on. I'll, I'll leave that to them. Um, any other discussion? No, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hands. It's unanimous, knowing that councillor Antonelli has just popped out. Next item is sixteen point two, which is the report to the Audit and Risk Management Committee of fifteenth of August twenty twenty-four. Um, and the recommendation is that council adopt the recommendations of the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the fifteenth of August twenty twenty-four. I'll move that. I guess Deputy Mayor, you're a member of that committee, would you like to second that? Thank you. Obviously, that's still in that committee. Do you wish to speak to on, on that meeting?
No, I have nothing to speak to. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, no, the councillor Antonelli is not in the room. We now move on to, um, we have four late items. And, um, so what I'll do is go through the legal procedure, because we would normally publicly as much earlier, but, um, item sixteen point three, which is on the twenty twenty-five Ipswich Show Holiday. Item sixteen point four, which is the late motion for the twenty twenty-four Local Government Association of Queensland Conference. Item sixteen point five, which is the councillor representation on the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust. And sixteen point six, uh, which is on the proposal to acquire industrial property located at Flinders View for a strategic.
And 16.6, which is on the proposal to acquire industrial property located at Flinders View for a strategic purpose. As they're not in there, I now need to move that we look at these late items. So in accordance with section 9.3.2 of the council's meeting procedures policy, council grant permission for those items in consideration. So item 16.3, 16.4, 16.5 and 16.6. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll open up for any discussion. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, noting that councillor Tully is not in the room. Thank you for that. Item 16.3 is the 2025 Ipswich Show Holiday and the recommendations that council accepts the recommendation of the Ipswich Show Society for council CEO to apply to the Office of Industrial Relations for the Ipswich Show Public Holiday for next year to be Friday the 16th of May. I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. I'll open it up for a discussion. I think councillor Doyle, you were at the members' meeting just recently this week, I think?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I attended their general meeting this week and the executive update was really great to hear. There's so many amazing events that they support and put on each year out of the showgrounds. The Ipswich Show was again a huge success, I think around 33,000 to 35,000 visitors and residents through. It was also really interesting to hear about their plans going forward with the Greyhound racing moving out of the showgrounds there and what the arena might look like or needs to look like to move to a competition standard for Equestrian or any other events. And they've got a number of improvements and infrastructure projects underway there. So, yeah, really, really impressive to see that they are thriving. I know showgrounds and show societies right across Australia do struggle to maintain their relevance. And, yeah, we have a thriving local organisation in the Ipswich Show Society and really dedicated committee members who are past community leaders and really successful businesspeople. So I think city's in good hands when it comes to Ipswich Showgrounds. I look forward to seeing those improvements.
Thank you very much, councillor Doyle. Yes, I think former deputy mayor Denise Hanley is the patron of the show. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Madden?
Oh, Mayor, I just wanted to wish the show society not just a wonderful show in 2025, but all the other events that they have during the year. But the show is their pinnacle event and it's really one of those iconic events that we have in Ipswich. And I can't remember when I first went to the show, but it was a very, very long time ago. And for the last 10 years, I've had stalls at the show, just changed a little bit in recent times. But it's always something I look forward to and I love to support the various exhibitions, particularly the horticultural and gardening exhibition, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Madden.
Did you say the rabbit's pending his appointment to the Rabbit Board?
Thank you. If there's other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous.
May I clarify, may I clarify the item number, please?
The one that's on the, on the screen, 16.3. Thank you. Now, moving on to item 16.4, which is the Late Motion for the 2024 Local Government Association of Queensland Conference. And it's that council approved motion five as detailed attachment one to be submitted to the conference. I'll just say, I'll, I'll move this. Do I have a second for that? This is fancy councillor. Thank you, councillor Tully. As in moving, I just want to say that if we're going into an area where we're giving some personal views on court outcomes, may I suggest that we go to closed session or if there's anything else that you think that is for this, for this particular?
Mayor, I think we can discuss it at a higher level based on the prepared commentary.
Thank you.
And which will, if it's accepted by the LGAQ, will become public if we discuss it at that higher level.
Thank you. So I guess my, in speaking to, I'll just say that I support this particular motion and I think it's a great way for us to, or Queensland communities to evolve. Councillor Tully, is the second to you? You should just speak a bit further on?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, and perhaps Mr Davie might just be able to elaborate on it because I'd had a meeting with him during the week. It's a complex issue. And I'd like to thank him personally for, and with Wade Wilson, because in crafting motions to go to the LGAQ conference, it's a matter of 77 councils in Queensland understanding and agreeing to a proposal. And because it's a late item, we will need the specific approval of the LGAQ to bring this one forward. But what it does, it goes back to the Flood's Commission of Inquiry. Its decision was handed down in 2012, which basically looked at the flood resilience and planning issues to reduce the effects of flooding, encatchments in many parts of Queensland. And the state government and local councils have been involved with that for a period of years. We have made great advancements, particularly in our new draft town plan. It also raises the issue of the voluntary home buyback programme, which is taking people out of the flood area, taking homes away from the flood area. But the, the purpose of this motion is to have a holistic approach to a review after, well, 12 years since 2012 when the report was handed down, how it's been, how the general issue is being handled by the state government, by private certifiers, by local government and by the courts. So I think it's a real opportunity and hopefully other councils, particularly the ones that have serious flooding, and there's many of those in South East Queensland, will support this motion. But just to put into context some of the detailed issues here and to those back-to-back issues of the Flood's Commission of Inquiry and planning legislation, court decisions and how the state government, even private certifiers, approach some of these issues. But Mr Davie, I think might be, I'd have a few questions that myself and perhaps others have as well.
Thank you, Mr Davie.
Good morning. Brett Davie, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Just to crystallise the sort of consideration of this, in the wording, which I think's put it together quite succinctly, can you just take us from the Flood's Commission of Inquiry, what they endeavoured to do and what they recommended and how in practice the principles enunciated through that and recommended by the Commission of Inquiry, how that's being handled now? And I think there's a suggestion that it's probably time after 12 years to have a broader review of bringing those strands together at all the players in, perhaps another word for players, but all the parties involved in the issue in Queensland.
Of course. So the Flood Commission of Inquiry was obviously commenced in response to the impacts of the 2011 floods. And the broad scope was to look at the circumstances, not just dam management, but how floodplains were being managed, how disaster responsiveness was occurring and planning decisions. And rightly pointed out, there were some gaps between those different fields based upon the fact that planning wasn't necessarily required to consider disaster preparedness and response in a more direct way and that there were variances between council to council of floodlines and what the flood policy scenario was. So as a result of the recommendations of the Commission Inquiry, the councils embarked on doing a more regional approach for flooding to consider the catchment and the entire river catchment, because obviously river catchments don't stop at local government boundaries. And then there were a series of reforms to the planning system such that land use planning needed to consider more than just a line on a plan from a flooding perspective. It needed to consider the concepts of flood risk, hazard warning time, the impact of inundation on people and then the impact of inundation and the events, I suppose, on our capacity to manage the event, including relocation of people in those times or danger to people and property. So that led to a whole heap of state reforms, as well as a lot of investment in a regional flood model, which is essentially a study of the rivers in SEQ. And councils, including ourselves, have then moved forward with doing some quite significant work in our own flood space. And for us, the planning scheme is included in that. I would estimate that we've spent in the order of $1.5 million just in updated flood studies and the flood material to inform our draft planning scheme. So given the time that's elapsed, there's been a range of decisions made in the last 12 years. Some of them will be really good examples to look at, some of them we could have probably dealt with better. And that's just, that's for us, that's for state government, that's for private certifiers and the courts. And my view is that it's probably time to review and ensure that the decisions that are coming from any jurisdiction or assessment manager are consistent with the objectives of the Flood Commission of Inquiry, particularly noting that the voluntary home buyback process is on now, is trying to take that next level of avoiding the impact on those established areas, the worst of the worst areas. And we would hate for the planning policy not to support that outcome.
Yes, do you have questions, councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr Davie. Without specifically talking about any of the current matters where council's involved in legal proceedings in the PNE Court. But if we could talk about generally conditions for development approvals. Is there, does there seem to be a reliance on, and by various stakeholders, a reliance on imposing conditions that will allow us to minimise risk to residents if we allow or if we have to approve development within a flooded area? That's just a sense that I'm getting and we know in reality development approval conditions and the ongoing compliance and monitoring of them is very challenging for any local government with limited resources. So I'm just wondering, is that a part that we need to be focused on as well and advocating around?
Yes, and some of that comes down to what is, what is our core priority? Is our core priority to enable a development for the betterment of the community, the economy? Or is our core priority to restrict development so that we're not exposing more people and assets to impact from natural hazards? Now, there are a range of different approaches depending upon where you are located from a council perspective. You could imagine that the issues that are being experienced at a coastal council for storm surge, for example, are very different to the experience that we would have from riverine flooding. But you are correct in that you could theoretically approve some units or more housing in a floodplain. The downstream, excuse the pun, effect of that is that you've got people living there that either are in danger in the event of a flood, they need to make decisions to evacuate. If they evacuate, where do they evacuate to? And then what's the fallout of that? So a purist view would be you wipe out every floodplain and you don't allow development in those floodplains. There's obviously a balance depending upon the nature of flooding and the, your overall objectives for your community. And I should say that this is a, this is a learning space as well. Like the amount of evolution that's happened in the last 12 years is quite staggering. You can imagine how much the state spent on that because they, they had to work on a collective view, including policy. And then each council is doing their own work from that. So if we've spent 1.5 million, and that's, that's a rough estimate, I haven't actually gone and totaled, that wouldn't include officer time as well. Every council's spending exhaustive amounts of money. We're now at a point where councils are starting to implement this new intended policy setting for flooding. It's like anything, you've got to test to make sure it's getting the desired outcome. And if it's not, well then, you know, you change the rules or you fix something.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions, Mr Davie? No. Thank you very much, Mr Davie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wish to speak any further on this, councillor Tully?
Oh, I think from my point of view, that encapsulates everything that we needed to consider.
I'll put for other discussion. Yes, councillor Tully?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just as player, Chair of Planning, one of the concerns I get is that obviously each time we have a flood, there's always commentary in the community about council approving properties and dwellings and the like in areas that where probable flooding could or may occur. What we're seeking to do here is try and ensure that there's consistency, particularly through the courts, who seem to take a, seem to have a different way of looking at things than what our, our planning staff are now, particularly in light of recent events. One of my great concerns is that if we don't see a consistency, we could have a situation where regardless of planning and emergency responses and the like that each of these properties may have to undertake, that, that sort of knowledge, that sort of requirement may become lax over time. And as you would all know, prior to 2011, the most recent serious flood event prior to that was 74. So there was some 30-odd years from 74 through to the 2011 flood, where for most people in the community, the idea of a flood reaching such heights was lost to the imagination. So certainly, this particular motion, I support it, I will be supporting it. There is a need for consistency. I think everybody needs to be singing from the same song sheet on this matter because at the end of the day, it is people's lives at stake.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to add. Councillor Tully, you have anything in reply? No one spoke against it. In that case, we'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. The next item is 16.5, councillor representation on the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust. And it's council nominate one of its councillors to be appointed to the vacancy on the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust as per Part Three, Division One, Section Five A, one of the River Improvement Trust Act. And I think, is that nomination councillor Madden? Is that correct? As I understand from some of the emails we've, we've shared and communicated, which is lovely to see.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to amend.
Oh, that's okay. As a Chair, I nominate councillor Madden to be appointed to the vacancy. Obviously, you're on that, councillor Madden. Do I have a second? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess in speaking to it, we do need two people on that. Councillor Madden, you've, the Chair of the Environment Sustainability Committee and you have a long, I think, held passion for all things country, horticultural and rapids. So I think this is a natural fit. Not yet, not yet. Yes, so I just could check with the Deputy Mayor as a second, if she'd like to say anything.
I cannot think of any other councillor more fitting for this role than councillor Madden. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up for other discussion.
Oh, Mayor, I'd just like to say I spent many days and weeks of my misspent youth in the Brammer River. We had a, an area of the Brammer River called the Sandbank off Patton Street. It's not there anymore now, it's grown over with trees. But honestly, it was a place to be if you couldn't ride your bicycle to the Ipswich Pool, you could just go to the end of Patton Street and swim in the river. It's hard to imagine now that was part of our growing up. But on a more serious note, I spent a few years on the, on the board of Healthy Waterways and learned a lot about the need to keep our waterways clean. And each year, Healthy Waterways does an appraisal of all the rivers in South East Queensland and gives them ratings. And the Brammer River doesn't always appear in a positive note on that. So I'm looking forward to working with the River Improvement Trust to get us a bit, a better ranking with the annual survey of Healthy Waterways. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put for other discussion. There's no discussion, move to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Yes, you're allowed, yes, it's unanimous and carried. Yes, you are permitted to vote on that. Move on to item 16.6, which is the proposal to acquire industrial property located at Flinders View for a strategic purpose. And that, we have two recommendations, that one that council resolved to acquire land located at Flinders View as per the confidential attachment one for a strategic purpose. as per the confidential attachment one for a strategic purpose. And B, that the CEO be authorised to negotiate and execute the required documentation with the registered property owner for council to acquire the land located at Flinders View as per the confidential attachment. And to do any other acts necessary to implement council's decision to acquire the land in accordance with the parameters set up in the accompanying report. Noting the confidential nature, and I think this has come as a late report for a reason, I actually propose that we go into... Actually, can I move it and get a second so that way we can go into discussion in a closed session? So I'll move this, and I think councillor Madden, you were seconding this. Thank you. I'll then now move that we go into accordance with, move into closed session in accordance with section 254 J3. And in relation to H, in negotiations related to the taking of land to the local government of the Acquisitions Land Act, I think that's the one, or either. Or are the matter of local government required to keep confidential? Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. That to the vote to go into closed session. Thank you, it's unanimous. Please let me know we're in closed session.
Thank you, we're back in open session. It's two minutes past 12. We've come back in because we actually haven't discussed the matter itself. We've had two councillors declare potential declarable conflicts of interest. We've gone into great depths with both of those. Unfortunately, certainly for one councillor, we can't go into too much detail what that conflict of interest is because the matter is actually confidential. So it's not that that councillor does it. That councillor, those councillors were both fully declared and answered all questions openly. And certainly had let us know that they don't have any personal or financial benefits to that. So, but we do have a process once that's been declared, we do need to do that, so.
Just for clarity, I had held the...
Just for clarity, I held the view that I did not have one and it was raised by another councillor.
Yes.
Just for the purposes of the meeting minutes.
Yes, so yes, so councillor Augustine did raise a potential declarable conflict of interest. And I thank her for that, it's always good to have good governance. So in accordance with section one fifty, so those two councillors, councillor Madison and councillor Antonelli, so in accordance with section one fifty, my apologies. I move that councillor Jacob Madison participates and votes in item, I'll just check here, sixteen point six, titled 'Proposal to acquire industrial property located at Flinders View for a strategic purpose', because there's no personal or financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that, but could I, on the documents that we have, I think that right on the bottom of the red document it talks, I think we've got to determine that, that he does not have a prescribed or declarable interest, rather than, that's the draft resolution that we have. I think that's because it's been raised by another councillor.
By another councillor, yeah, that's what you're saying, yes.
Sorry, I think it needs to follow that format, rather than can you speak and say and whatever.
No, no, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. So I'll withdraw that, that particular motion if I may. And change it to the one that we use for when a councillor really believes there may be one. And that resolution is I move that councillor Jacob Madison does not have a prescribed or declarable conflict of interest in relation to item sixteen point six, titled 'Proposal to acquire industrial property located at Flinders View for a strategic purpose', because there is no personal or financial benefit. I'll just double check with you, councillor Madison, do you have a personal or financial benefit to the matter at hand?
No, no association whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. You wish to speak, councillor?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to raise, we, we've made this decision based on the facts at hand and I think councillor Madison's also alluded to the fact that it's based on what we know now and I assume once more information does become available to us that if there was a need to raise anything further, councillor Madison would. Very similar to my situation recently in managing that conflict, ownership changed over an extended period of time, so.
Yep, I've always found councillor Madison to be very forthcoming with his declarations of conflict of interest, so I believe that if anything did happen, he would come forward to us again. There's no further discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Oh, sorry. Okay, so I've put my hand up, councillor Madison's put his hand up, councillor Doyle, councillor Tully, councillor Johnick. Those against, councillor Augustine. And those abstaining, councillor Madison and councillor Antonelli. Or I should say councillor Madison didn't vote. So you may, you have been found to have not have a conflict of interest, because councillor Madison may stay in the discussion. The other one is councillor Tully, which you declared yourself.
Yeah, just to make public the reason for abstaining, obviously, because I wish to declare a, a possible interest as well. So I, in accordance with section one fifty E for Echo, F for Foxtrot, of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I wish to inform the meeting that I may have a personal interest, or maybe could be perceived to have an interest in item sixteen point four, five, is it?
Six, sixteen point six.
Sixteen point six, thank you. The nature of the interest is simply that the matter involves real estate. It is a listed property. I possess a real estate salesperson certificate, although not operational because I am not attached to any firm. I wish to place on record that I am not familiar with this property in any way, nor its owner, nor the agents involved, I have no association with them whatsoever.
Thank you very much. So I'm just checking, it was under EF? When a councillor has a pers- which is personal interest in an ordinary business matter of a local government.
And again, just place on record while you're going through that, Mayor, I have raised this interest before, but that was primarily in relation to properties that we already owned. So this is obviously private property, of which the council has an interest. So therefore, I'm just making it as the circumstances are slightly different.
Thank you.
Albeit, I do recognise the previous decision of this council.
May I check if you have any personal or financial benefits to this particular matter?
None whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Any questions of councillor Antonelli? In that case, I move that councillor Tully participates and votes on item sixteen point six, entitled 'Proposal to acquire industrial property located at Flinders View for a strategic purpose', because there's no personal or financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Madison. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote, those in favour. I can see everyone except for councillor Tully and councillor Madison have voted for that. Against, abstain. The Tully for abstain, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate those conflicts coming out, it's a very important part of governance. I will now move back, back to go into closed session or mark it as lunchtime. Well, I'll go, I'll go to closed session so we can deal with this matter. I'll move that in accordance with section two five four J three, that we move into closed session to do in regards to H, in regards to negotiations led to the taking of land by the local government under Acquisition Act nineteen sixty seven. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle, any discussion? I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, it was unanimous, we're now going to closed session.
Thank you. Welcome back to the CATS Ordinary Meeting of the 12th of September 2024. It is 12:53. Before we continue any further, I should let you know that we did adjourn for a lunch break from 12:20 to 12:52. We've just come back and now ready to go into open session to vote on this particular matter. Now beforehand, I had moved this particular matter and councillor Madden, you had seconded it. Noting the confidential nature of this, would anyone like to have any discussions? No? In that case, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. So because it's unanimous in the room? Thank you. And no, we haven't finished. We're going to our item at 12.2, which was the minutes for the special meeting last week. And so before was it the fifth? And under the local government regulations 254F4, we do have to deal with the minutes in this particular meeting. So we will. I did ask council officers to put a suggestion because obviously during that particular part of the meeting that you've raised, councillor Tully, there was a bit of toing and froing and including me calling for a vote for and then not doing it against and abstain. So the organisation has put forward this potential amendment to see if people are happy, that a full transcript of the discussion of suspension of meeting procedures.
Just a point of order, Mayor. I think earlier in the meeting, I'd moved the motion and it was agreed that to formalise my motion, that we, the first thing would be to seek a second to my motion.
Apologies.
Thank you.
I'll start from the beginning. We're at item 12.2, which is the unconfirmed minutes of the special council meeting from the 5th of September 2024. And I'll move that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 5th of September 2024 be confirmed. Do I have a second? Last time councillor Augustine seconded that. And I'll open it up. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Yeah, I formalised my moving of the amendment which I proposed earlier in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a sec? Certainly as the mover, I don't agree because I think there's some parts missing. So you'll now wish to move that as an amendment for everyone to consider?
Yes, that's correct.
Do I have a second for councillor Tully's amendment? Thank you, councillor Madden. So do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I note that there's a, well, I'm not sure if it's additional words or substituted words that have just been sent to councillors. I'm happy to accept them, the proposal, and I might read that out, having moved that amendment. To accept, well, I will read this out, to add to the amendment that I've moved to, so it'd be at the end of the existing amendment, that a full, or the proposed amendment, that a full transcript of the discussion of suspension of meeting procedures from the time code 47 dot 12 of the live stream where councillor Paul Tully raised a point of order to time code 50.56 of the live stream being appended to the minutes. So I'll move that as an amendment to my amendment.
Okay. I'll just check with councillor Madden if you're happy to support that amendment to the amendment. Thank you. Do you wish to discuss, to speak to it?
Well, the way in which I've worded this is to avoid as much as genuinely possible, any suggestion of wrongdoing or criticism. But I think, believe that the minutes need to clearly state the circumstances of the proposal and why the change is necessary, so that the minutes in perpetuity will properly reflect what occurred. The amendment that I proposed is not incorporated in the minutes. It was indicated by you as the mover of the motion that I was seeking an amendment to was not acceptable to you as the mover, which meant that my motion of amendment wasn't automatically incorporated into that motion. Then immediately you put the matter to the vote. The other matter that's of significance there is the way in which it appears in the minutes of the affirmative of your suspension motion. It indicates councillor Harding and Augustine. And at that point, there was no call for those in the negative or those abstaining. So my view is that, and this is what my amendment does, is to simply state who those who were in the affirmative. So I've tried the word.
So if I'm going to say, this is not, this is just to have the amendment, this discussion now is whether we're going to have an amendment or not?
That's correct. Today.
Yes.
Yes.
So not the substantial matter yet?
No, no, but I'm speaking of why we should have the amendment because the existing draft minutes don't accurately reflect what happened. There was no negative vote taken, just on this last point. There was no negative vote taken. There was no vote taken for those in abstention. I'm supportive of those additional words that have been proposed by the administration to, so that any person in the community will be able to, with the transcript, will be able to compare the minutes with live issues that occurred during a short period of time. But I strongly believe that the minutes need to reflect the very difficult circumstances at the last meeting that we're all under. I don't believe the current minutes, even though they've obviously been put together by staff in good faith, that in the particular unusual circumstances of this case, that they don't accurately reflect either the amendment that I moved or how the vote was actually taken in the ultimate.
Thank you. Councillor Madden, do you wish to speak to the amendment?
The only point I'd like to make, Mayor, is that the need for accuracy. And as councillor Tully points out, once these minutes are approved, they're approved in perpetuity.
Yes, they are.
So I think we should take the time to get them right.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Like I said in the, before, in reviewing these, without a doubt, I called for a suspension of meeting procedures. I was, I moved it. Councillor Augustine seconded it. I think then councillor Tully proposed an amendment that people got twice. I think councillor Doyle then did a point of order about withdrawing. And then the deputy mayor asked if she could speak to the matter, but then I guess wanted to not speak about the suspension. I said that I didn't agree to that amendment and so, and went straight to a vote. And I voted, I asked for those four and myself and councillor Augustine voted for. I did not call for a vote against or to abstain. So I think that's important. I actually think it's important to have the transcript rather than just what you have here because there are some steps missing. Because you will see when you go through, because it was a bit of a fast paced meeting that when I said no to the amendment, it was a no to, because I was the mover. And I guess I would have expected you to say, well, I put this forward as an amendment and, you know, then we asked for a second. So I know that's a contentious issue probably between the two of us. You feel as though you didn't need to say that again. And I say as the chair that I. And I say as the chair that I did need to see that. And then I think the transcript is a more accurate reflection of what actually happened in the meeting because there's a part missing. If I look at your amendment, there's certainly a part missing between the second line and the third line that I think is an important context for the, if we're going to be particular on the own accurate record. And I think the transcript is the most accurate record that we could have. So I would support what the officers have put forward, but probably not the rest of your original amendment, councillor Tully. That's my perspective because I don't think that's an accurate reflection. There are things taken out. As soon as you take data out and information out, it's not, and then things are taken out of context. So, yes, councillor Madden, so I.
I guess there will have to be an agreement to disagree. I feel that there's an inclusion of information there that implies that I voted against it when no vote was taken. I wasn't afforded the opportunity to actually either vote against or abstain. My personal view of what was occurring in that rapid fire situation was councillor Doyle withdrew a request to speak again. So for me, I thought the procedural motion was no longer required. And I have seen some commentary drawing out other things. I'm sure people formed different conclusions in that moment because a lot was happening. But yeah, for me, it doesn't tell the full story as is. And I think councillor Tully's amendment improves the minutes. It also includes the addition of the appendix. I'm not willing to proceed with the minutes as is.
I would agree with you, yes, I agree. Especially the part where it says that councillors voted in the negative because he didn't, I didn't call for it. So I do apologise and I admit wholeheartedly that that happened. I guess for me, what I'd love to see is, I guess, the first three lines from the amendment. I don't think accurately portray what happened. I think it takes context out because it takes out other things that were going on at the same time. And also how we normally operate with matters. So whenever we have an amendment, we usually do ask the mover if they're happy with it or not. And if no, so I guess that's the crux of the point here. So yeah, those first three lines, I think because data is taken out, because it's not an actual transcript, it's been, there've been things that have been cherry picked. It doesn't talk about the statements that councillor Doyle made and councillor Johnic made, all the situation. Whereas the transcript actually does, is the accurate record.
Apologies, our council meeting minutes have never been like an interpretation of handsawed or something of that like. So I thought these were quite considered and basic additions to address the issue of votes being recorded that were never taken. So I don't believe we've ever had council minutes that has taken into account everything that's said by everyone.
Yes.
But at least this sufficiently addresses the issue of the votes that were not taken.
Absolutely, it will, it will address that. I just feel that, I've already said it, I guess I won't re-argue. I've got further discussion, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not concerned either way about the changes. I did want to take the opportunity to note the record. This all came about because I was talking twice. I just want the record to note, my view is, I wasn't given an opportunity to speak to the amended motion. I asked council officers questions and then I wasn't permitted to speak again on the basis that I was speaking for a second time. I know I've raised it with both yourself and the CEO. And I'm happy to just leave it there. But, you know, it's a takeaway for all of us that these meetings sometimes progress rapidly, debate progresses. And we just need to be mindful and respectful of each other and, you know, support each other and giving them an opportunity to speak rather than silence anyone.
And I think too, in that situation, that was the crux. As soon as you spoke, councillor Tully said that obviously I was just to follow council policy, stating that you not to speak a second time and you hadn't actually spoken the first time. So again, how far do you go back on the transcript? I guess for me, it's very important if we're talking about that particular time period, that it's actually portrayed accurately. At the moment, data is not in that. Those first three sentences, I believe, are taken out of context and I think are not an accurate reflection. And that's what we're talking about, an accurate reflection of the minutes. Councillor Tully.
Just to clarify, thank you, and not to close the debate, there's the additional wording. Could we just go up to that? That's in there, yeah, thank you. That's been agreed to. Is that my understanding?
I'm very happy with that.
By the mover and seconder. Yes, so that's incorporated into the amendment. Thank you.
That's, that's, yeah, definitely. B is in there. Yourself and councillor Madden have moved in second of that. And that's what we're discussing today. So I fully support B being in there. My concern is those first three lines of A, they are cherry picked out. They are not a full, and so things can be taken out of context. This is a permanent record. And if we're after accuracy on a contentious matter, I think recommendation B is probably the best way for us to go. Councillor Genelli.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And through the chair, I think we're all in agreement that minutes of meetings are not handsawed. We all agree with that. And they are to be a concise record. And generally speaking, they are a concise record of procedural matters. And I believe this, from my recollection of the meeting, as well as my observation of looking at the recording at a later time. I believe that these, this amendment is actually quite a concise and accurate record of the procedural matters that took place. I note your apology, Mayor, in relation to inadvertently failing to ask for a no vote or abstentions. However, I do believe that the amendment as it currently stands, and I do support the inclusion of the transcript because I do believe you're right, Mayor. It does give context to the matter. It was quite a difficult and challenging time of the meeting. So yes, it should be included in there. However, I do think that because of the matters pertaining to the call for amendment, that being a procedural matter, it does need to be included in the minutes. And yeah, from that perspective, I think that context is never, context can be, is missing from all minutes in many respects because context is all of our discussion. And our discussions are generally recorded in minutes. So they are recorded on the live stream or in the recording of the meeting. So however, the procedural matters do need to be recorded. And I think that that is exactly what this amendment is set to do.
Thank you. I think to me, just the first three lines need to remove. The rest of it saying that I called for the vote and only called for yes and didn't call for the no, the abstention needs to be recorded. I have no objections to that. But those first three lines, I do have major issues. And I'll just ask, would you consider removing those, councillor Tully?
No, but I won't speak to this again. I'll call to the standing orders and just speak once and then have a right of reply.
Any other discussion from anyone? Councillor Tully, give you a right of reply and we'll go to the vote. This is just for to have the amendment as it is and then we have to discuss, then we have to vote on the matter itself.
That's correct, yeah, that is correct. My issue is this, and it's been raised about what is context. And the context is able to be discerned by any reasonable person with the agreed second amendment to incorporate the inclusion of the wording of all councillors at about the time this issue was raised. Our standing orders make it clear that in a debate, any debate, one, a person is permitted to speak once. There was a motion to, by yourself, to enable people to speak more than once. The real purpose for my amendment was to make it clear that those debates could have, in that circumstances, and why I put up an amendment was to, not to gag anyone at all, but was to enable all councillors to speak twice on an issue, which was not just an ordinary council issue, but it's a very rare council issue, and that is the decision to be made, how to fill a vacancy in the Ipswich City Council. The absence of my amendment takes out of context the whole matter. Because my context was to permit people to speak, but twice in such a situation, rather than an unlimited number of speeches, which would have been the result of of that motion had it been carried. The essence of what occurred at that time hasn't left out anything that is material to that circumstance. I believe that the minutes of that meeting are required to show that I moved an amendment which wasn't put, a no second was called for. And then, of course, the other thing is the fact that the motion that you put was asked only for those voting in the affirmative. So I'd ask councillors to support the amendment as proposed and with the additional words which have been suggested as an appendix or an addendum to the minutes of the official minutes of the meeting. Yeah, and that's to cater for both circumstances being enunciated by people here today.
I think we now go to the vote for that amendment. Please, those four, please raise your hand. Nice surprise. Councillor Madsen, councillor Augustine, councillor Johnic, councillor Tully, councillor Genelli, councillor Madden. Thank you. Those against, myself, I know that councillor Doyle's not in the room. So the live motion before us now. I'll wait till the key finishes there. Yep, I think it's important that we get the, do we know what we're voting on? Thank you. Okay, so we are now looking at item 12.2 and there is recommendation A and B. So I will move, do A first. Do I have a mover for recommendation A? Yes, councillor Tully. Do I have a second for recommendation A? Here, councillor Genelli. Okay. Do we have any discussion on recommendation A?
No, I think we've encompassed the entire discussion, thank you.
I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. That's everyone in the room except for myself. Those against, myself, and the councillor's not in the room. Or do, now do, I don't, recommendation B. I'll move recommendation B. Do I have a second for that, councillor Tully? Thank you. Any discussion on that? Yes, only discussion, I'll talk about the fact that when you look at the five characteristics of data and information accuracy, you look at data quality, is accuracy, completeness, reliability, relevance and turminess. And I think the transcript does that on a contentious matter. Any other discussion? Put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I think councillor Doyle's in the room. Thank you. Any notices of motion to come up? Questions on notice? I think there was one thing that we're going to get back to us on. Councillor Tully had a question on a matter.
That was in relation to the camera.
The time, the TMR cameras.
There's two possibilities. There might be a good explanation for that or the information on the site might be wrong. So I think it might be better just to, the officers, to raise that informally.
Informally, not have a question on notice?
No, because it's on their site and I've sent everyone a copy of the information.
So we don't need to do those on notice.
Informally, it'd be better to, a way to do it.
In that case, I'll close the meeting at 1:17. Thank you very much. Bye.